I'd like to call to order the April 20th, 2017 Business Meeting and welcome our sixth Commissioner, Paul Reynolds down at the end there.
Thank you.
Would you please take the roll?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, and good evening. We have Mr. Chris Story here this evening representing County Council's office and of course, Mary Rathke, Clerk of the Board. She will be back here in a moment. I will go ahead and start the roll with Commissioner Humberton.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Bernard? Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to announce first that we will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item and introduce Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds, which I already did. And I guess we have a hearing.
No.
No?
Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Oh, okay. So ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, there's two items on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Approval of a contract with Ballard Speyer LLP for bond tax council services and approval to apply to the CARE Oregon Community Benefit Grant Program for development investments related to the Housing Authority redevelopment plans.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove any of these items?
None.
I'll ask for a motion.
I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
Removed and second to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions.
Yes.
My first question is, do we have this kind of legal counsel in-house?
We do not. Bond counsel is a specific and recognized area of law that is certified by the SEC.
Okay. And my second question is, since it doesn't come out of County General Funds but comes out of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, where do the funds come from?
The Housing -- I presume you're asking me because you're looking at me.
Well, I figure you might be the one with the answer, but if there's someone else who has it.
If you like, we could have Chuck Robbins or Rich -- there we go, Rich Malloy from the Housing Authority.
I appreciate that. Just interested as to where the funding comes from.
Absolutely.
Not critical question, just curiosity.
I have an idea, but I'll let the expert answer.
The Money Tree. We wish.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rich Malloy. I'm the Asset Manager with the Housing Authority. To answer your question, Commissioner Humberton, is when you go out and set up these projects and basically what Ballard Speyer would do, it would be a council on converting public housing property to another type of affordable housing property, and it's funded when you put your development pro forma together. So similar to a bond issue where your bond counsel is paid through some of the proceeds of the bond, this project would be paid through for -- from the sale of the land when we do the development.
Okay.
And then we do have other funds if there's minor consulting.
Thank you very much.
Okay. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Paul. Your check's in the mail.
Thank you.
With that, I'll announce that the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority and convene as the Board of County Commissioners, and we'll start with a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a presentation of the 2017 Point in Time Homeless Count, and it's also an opportunity to provide recognition for our winter warming centers from this past winter season. We have Mr. Richard Swift, who is the Director of Health, Housing and Human Services, here to provide this presentation.
Good afternoon, or actually say evening to the Commission. Richard Swift, I'm the Director of Health, Housing and Human Services, and every two years, the last time we did this count was in 2015, we do our Point in Time Count, and this allows us to continue receiving funds from Housing and Urban Development for houselessness. So actually Brendan Durbin, who's Director of Social Services for H3S, will be going into the details about the count. I am up here actually just sort of to talk about some of the larger issues that we are seeing from this year's count. So, and it's actually, I think, my intent here is to install some urgency related to what we've been learning from this year's count. So our numbers of homeless in the county are up from 2015. The number of homeless people who are living in unsheltered conditions has increased dramatically. The number of homeless people who meet the definition of chronically homeless has also gone up. And our numbers related to children, kids who are couch surfing and then also unsheltered children, have gone up. One of the things that we saw in this year's count related to 2015 was in 2015, we had two -- the two top reasons were could not afford rent, that was number one, and number two was unemployment. Eviction was number six. In 2017 eviction has gone up to number three, with still affordability and unemployment being one and two. So, you know, what we're seeing here at this point, and I think what we see from the count is a problem regarding affordable housing and then also people's ability to participate economically. You know, unemployment is down, but we are not seeing wage increases that are able to pay for the cost of housing in Clackamas County, and this is a significant issue for us. We also will be coming to you on this topic more than, you know, every other year. We aren't going to necessarily do a Point in Time Count every year because that's an expensive proposition, but we are going to be talking about house assists and housing with this Board periodically because it's become such a critical issue for the county. So from there, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Brendan, and she can go into the specifics.
Chair Bernard, members of the Board, thank you so much for your time today. My name is Brenda Durbin. I'm the Director of Clackamas County Social Services. And as Rich mentioned, we completed our 2017 Point in Time Homeless Count the end of January this year. The Point in Time Count gives the county an opportunity to identify the number, the demographics and the living situation of Clackamas County residents who are living without a safe place to call home. As Rich mentioned, this count is a requirement of HUD, Continuum of Care. We get over $2.2 million each year coming into Clackamas County from HUD for homeless programs, so the count is a critical piece of ensuring that those funds continue to flow to the county. Rich mentioned a couple of details of what we found. I'll go into a little more detail. We identified 2,293 homeless individuals. 746 were unsheltered, meaning they were living in the street, in their car, another place not meant for human habitation. Fifty percent, or 379 of those counted, were under the age of 18, so that's almost 400 kids living on the streets in Clackamas County. We identified 290 unaccompanied youth. So these are kids aged up to 21 who are living without any parent. 157 people were housed in short-term emergency or transitional shelter programs. 1,295 individuals were unstably housed, maybe they were couch surfing, staying in another place that really wasn't stable, and for that number, 70 percent, or 910, are children. Eighty-five individuals who we counted served in the military, and of those, 52 were unsheltered. So truly, truly shocking numbers. As Rich mentioned, the numbers from 2015 have increased in all categories. Overall homelessness, 4 percent higher, 54 percent increase in unsheltered individuals, 35 percent increase in homeless children, 43 percent increase in chronically homeless individuals, meaning folks who have a physical disability and have been homeless for a period of time, and a 15 percent increase in homeless veterans. While there are many variables that occur from one count to the next, including methodology, volunteer availability, the number of agencies that we have involved, the weather, which was a big factor this year, it seems more than likely that we are indeed seeing an increase in the number of people in Clackamas County who don't have a safe place to call home. There are several reasons why we might be seeing this. As Rich mentioned, housing prices are skyrocketing. The Housing Authority did a study in 2016 that showed a 28 percent increase in rents in Clackamas County, and we're not seeing that same increase in incomes. The incredibly severe winter we had this summer, the fifth coldest winter in the region in history, may have brought more homeless people into sites where they are able to be counted. Over the past two years, we've been able to increase our outreach and engagement activities. That's a critical piece in developing trusting relationships for people living outside. Because of those outreach efforts, we think that there are more people who were willing to participate in the count. We're seeing a growing population in the county. That might be impacting these numbers. And we also believe that some households who in the past were unstably housed have now moved into that category of being literally homeless. In my point of view, this information should be a call to action for everyone in our community, from faith leaders to educators, business owners, and of course, elected officials. We need to redouble our efforts, and I just want to say a few things that we are doing because we're not just sitting on our hands here. You've heard a lot over the last couple of years about the Housing Authority's efforts to increase the number of public housing units. Those are incredibly important. We're seeing more affordable housing being built in the county. We have, as I mentioned a second ago, enhanced street outreach efforts. Thanks to funding from the Board, from the state and from the federal government, the number of slots that we have for homeless veterans has increased significantly over the last two years. We're also looking at innovative solutions like tiny houses. We've got an expanded network of winter warming shelters. We've got two planning bodies that are renewing their efforts, the Homeless Policy Council and the Housing Advisory Board, and we are so grateful for the ongoing support and interest from you, our elected officials. In just a minute, I'm going to introduce two folks to come up and talk to you who have a personal experience to share with you regarding the homeless count. But before I do that, I want to thank two really important groups of people. The first are the volunteers, the agencies, who participate in the Point in Time Count. As has been true for the last 10 years, we've had over 100 volunteers, county staff, we work with food pantries, the Oregon Department of Human Services, the Sheriff's Department, so many other agencies. And I want to give a special shout out to Lynn Deschler, who has been our homeless count coordinator for the last seven counts. Lynn is in the audience today, and we could certainly not do this without you. I'd like to thank Commissioner Savis for his participation in the count this year. I know there was interest from other Commissioners, but the schedules didn't just work out right. The other group that I want to thank, and we just came from a really inspiring meeting, are the entities that provided the winter warming shelter services over this past winter. As you all know, incredibly challenging weather we had this year. Our winter warming shelters were open 59 nights during the winter, and they opened with county funding when the temperatures dipped below 33 degrees. For some shelters, they were open for weeks at a time with no break. On days when the daytime temperature wasn't going to go above freezing, they stayed open during the day. I just, you know, I'm on email lists, so I got information about what was going on, and I was just so grateful all winter long to know that we have these amazing volunteers and agencies who are willing to do this incredibly difficult work. So we have here today in the audience representatives from the Father's Heart Street Ministry, Clackamas Service Center, and the Malala Warming Center. Those are the three centers that are funded by the county. As a testament to the values and what it means to work and live in Clackamas County, we had a private entity, the Oregon City Retirement Center, open up unused capacity in their facility with no government reimbursement, just out of the kindness of their heart and acknowledging what a critical situation there is. At the wrap-up meeting that we just finished, we had attendance from a couple of different church groups who are interested in working with us next winter, so we hope to further expand our capacity next winter, where hopefully we will not be open 59 nights. So with that, so one last thing. So at the meeting we just had, we did hand out certificates of appreciation signed by Chair Bernard and Richard Swift to the Warming Center, certificate appreciations for the work that they did, ensuring that no one in Clackamas County died from exposure this And for those in the audience who are interested, as soon as we're done with this presentation, we're going to have some cake on the third floor because a certificate is great, but cake is nice too. So at this point, it's my pleasure to welcome up to the table here Elaine, who is a woman who has experienced homelessness, and Nancy Ide, who is an Oregon City Commissioner and a first-time homeless count volunteer. So Elaine and Nancy, come on up. And thank you again so much for all your support.
Thank you. Pull that mic down to you and...
Good evening. My name is Elaine, and I'm 91 years old next month. During my life, I've had, done many things. I gave birth to five children. Two sons were deceased and one from Vietnam. I was a youth counselor. I was a drug counselor. I was a certified pilot. I was a realtor. I've had a very full life, and I was pretty fulfilled in all my life, and pretty soon retirement came and I went into an independent living situation, and I just, I couldn't go with my social security alone. I finally had to move out, and I moved in with friends and my children, and I had them. I lived with them off and on, but you know, it was just too much with everything for us to have, you know, different situations, different ages, you know, generations, and so it was just too much, and I couldn't afford to stay in the assisted living because they kept raising the rent, and I couldn't afford to pay for it every month. And as I said, I moved in with some of my relatives and friends, and I just couldn't get, you know, situated right, so I finally decided that I would move into my van, and I lived in my van for several months, and... I started sleeping in my van, and I couldn't figure out, you know, it was trying to get a bathroom, and living like that, you know, it was just not feasible for me to do. And I finally came to Social Services, and they took me in and showed me what to do and how to get things situated so I could, we went all over looking for houses and apartments and whatever, you know, that we could get to rent and couldn't afford them, and if I found one, it was either too much or they were too young, I was too old. It was just a weird situation, and... Well anyhow, I got into Social Services, and they came and took care of me, and they had me to go to different places and see if I could find an apartment or whatever, you know, and I just, and I wanted to go all over and see what I could find, but I just kept going up to the coast, up to the Dells, different places for apartments, and I just didn't have the money to pay for them because my social security was just not enough. And so then I came to Social Services, and through Social Services, I went through Catholic charities, and everybody helped me so much so that I could, so that I could find a place to live that was apt for me, that I could have a bathroom, have a bed to sleep in, and they all took care of me and did the best that they could to try to help me find a place to live in. And so I finally, they found me a place that, through Catholic charities and Social Services, and I'm now in a nice one-bedroom with five other girls, and it's just wonderful, you know, where I can have a bath if I want to, go to the bathroom, which is very important. And, you know, I just, I think that there should be more funding for everybody, not just for seniors, but especially for seniors, and I think that we need to have more, more funding. Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming and telling your story, and I agree. I wish we had more funding to do that, but we're, you know, I would say, Richard, that we do get the urgency and anything we can do to, you know, like Paul said, by next winter, we want a solution for as many people as we can, but 2,293 people, that's a lot of people, but we'll work as hard as we can, and we're committed. So thank you for telling us the story, and I'm glad you finally found a place that you feel comfortable in. Thank you.
Well, there you have it. Good evening, Chair Bernard and members of the Commission. My name is Nancy Ide, and I'm a resident of the city of Oregon City. I'm the former city recorder in Oregon City and a current member of the City Commission. I'm here today speaking as a citizen of the city and a volunteer of the homeless count for the first time. Several months ago, I met Lynn Deschler at a meeting of the Oregon City Homeless Solutions Coalition, which is a grassroots group rising up in Oregon City to find solutions to homelessness. Lynn invited me, and well, all of the group, to participate in the count, and I volunteered to help. I was assigned to the Father's Heart Street Ministry in Oregon City. My experience there widened my view of the challenges that are facing those, such as my friend here, who are homeless, and encouraged me to keep up with the efforts to seek further solutions. For instance, take Sam, a young man in his early twenties. He was on the street because he had a psychotic episode and had nowhere to go. He eventually received help through the Mental Health Services Division and became stable again. He was working his way out of homelessness, and that day had stopped into the Father's Heart just for lunch. The mental health services that he received met a deep need, and it launched him onto the road to recovery. And then there's Richard, a middle-aged man, a victim of domestic violence, who didn't know where to find help and ended up on the streets. But the streets tempted him into crime, and he experienced jail time. Richard learned how to live on the streets and where to find services, but I'm not so sure that he wants a different life for himself. And then there's Sandy. After her interview, I asked her what she needed the most, and she replied, "Someone to talk to who will listen to me." She just wanted to be heard. She has a voice, too. There were many interviews that day, but my personal takeaway was this: homeless people are not statistics. They are people like you and me with lives and families and children and backgrounds and futures. They want to receive love and they want to give love. They have fears and they have feelings, and most just want to be acknowledged. A warm smile when being passed on the sidewalk, a hello or a small gesture of kindness to know that you see their face, that's really all they want. The homeless count is not just about gathering data. It's about learning that these folks are members of our community, just like you and me. Many of their needs are the same as yours and mine: food, shelter, love, friends, medical care, conversation, dignity, a meaningful life. They deserve the same respect and compassion that we all desire, and it's my hope that the data collected will be used to help identify these friends, not as statistics, but as fellow human beings requiring a helping hand from you and me on their road to a healthy and happy future. So thank you for your time.
And thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your volunteerism. I've had the opportunity with Father's Heart, Clackamas Service Center, and St. John's Episcopal in Milwaukee, and that's the best part about it, is hearing the stories and trying to figure out what you can do to help. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to thank both of you for your very touching stories, and I just, I know that the first time I did the homeless count was just a different awakening for me, and I think I would encourage people, keep an open mind, and volunteer, elected officials to volunteer and do it, and kind of understand when you're talking to those folks, understanding, hearing those personal stories, you know, your heart breaks, your heart breaks, especially when there's children involved, but the same token is my heart goes out to our senior citizens that, as I always felt for a substantial part of my life, at some point in time, knowing elderly folks who've worked hard their whole life, paid taxes their whole life, and were citizens their whole life, and then find themselves in a situation, in an economy, in which they can't survive like they could before, and not do so in comfort. I think it's a shame. It's just something about our society that it is what it is, but as policymakers, you know, we can try to do our best to deal with the folks that are in harm's way today, and also, I think as policymakers, I think our biggest responsibility is to look at ways to prevent these things from happening. Rents are a big factor. It's some, I think it's something that we can do, something about. I think our land use policies and how and what we do that causes gentrification, that causes rents to rise, that is the number one reason for displacing people. And I think the first thing that, the most important, not the most important, the most surprising thing for me two years ago when I did the homeless count was not what we would define as chronic homeless, but people that were working that were homeless, that still could not afford the rent. And I know we want to look at stats, and we look at the employment numbers, and the employment numbers say, oh, you know, all these people are... numbers say, oh, you know, all these people are back to work, but you know, a lot of those are part-time jobs and they don't pay. And even those that are full-time jobs don't pay enough to pay the high rents. And our poverty numbers would simply go down. I tell people, if our rents went down back to where they were 10 years ago, our poverty level would go down because poverty is based on a formula. And once you understand that the jobs out there are not paying what they did and they don't employ people like they did, they don't offer insurance like they did, and whoever imagined 20, 30 years ago, that medical cost and health insurance would cost what it is today, it exceeds the mortgage for a lot of people paying in their own homes. No one ever envisioned that. And I think there's just a lot of things that affect people's income and people's ability to live a comfortable life, especially after their contribution to society for, you know, 60, 70 years. I think it's just a sad situation. But thank you for your stories and again, anyone out there watching or listening, I really urge you to get involved and understand this because some of these people out there are not homeless by choice. Most of them are not homeless by choice.
I just want to add, Nancy, when I was mayor of Milwaukee, I didn't have any idea where someone homeless would get any services until I came here for a leadership program and met somebody who works here, still works here, who helped me get a vet who lived on the back, at the back of the library in Milwaukee, was a vet who was homeless. He told us he had no family, but he actually did. He just didn't want to be a burden to the family. But I contacted the county, they found him a place to live. Sadly, he got cancer, but both myself and the county were at his bed when he died and I just was very impressed. Not only that, we took care of his ashes and we got him a military burial, thanks to the hard work of the county. But Stan's kid showed up about three years later and had heard the story and I had Stan's wallet in my desk here and I was able to give that to his son. And that was, you know, I was so proud of the county. But that's the other thing, we got to communicate to cities and to everybody we can that these services are available. You just have to know where they are. I mean, at Baldock Rest Stop, there were dozens of people living there. School buses had to pick up the kids to go to school all around the county and ODOT was one of those people out of there. And our staff went, found them jobs, got them housing. It's just amazing what we can do when we really work hard at it. So, very proud of what the county does, but tell your city councilors.
I'll do that.
And have them come and we'll show them around. Thank you very much.
We'll do that, thank you.
Well, with that, we're going to present some certificates and take a photo, right?
You already presented the certificates.
Okay, we're gonna take a photo.
And everyone should come up.
Come on up. All the folks who volunteered.
[inaudible]
Anyway. [inaudible] Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 [applause]
[inaudible]
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 Third floor for cake, everyone. Except the commissioners, you guys have to stay.
[inaudible]
No cake for us.
It's a tough job if somebody's got to...
Bring us a piece.
Let's just head on down.
You can't ride two horses at the same time.
That, I've seen them do it on TV.
[laughing]
[inaudible]
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 All right, let's get back to our meeting and Ken?
Oh, did...
Citizen Communication, Citizen.
Ken, did you want to mention anything?
Yeah, Jerry McAdams from the Veterans Center. You'll have to correct me on the exact term, but Commissioner Bernard and I had the opportunity to meet with him and Tina Kennedy at this Veterans Center over on Johnson Creek Boulevard. It is amazing what they have pulled together of resources for homeless veterans and others. I believe other commissioners have been there also. They're all volunteers that are working there. They're getting donations from all over the place. They're allowed, they're able to clothe people, help people with their children, help people with their pets, give them food. It was really quite amazing how much they are able to do, all on a voluntary basis, not only in terms of their own efforts, but in terms of businesses that have stepped up and made donations that make it all possible. And I think it's CrossPoint Motors, if I got it right. Pardon?
CrossPoint Northwest.
CrossPoint Northwest has granted them the entire top floor of their building.
Ten thousand square feet.
Thank you, Jerry. Ten thousand square feet for their operation and they've given it to them for free. And they should be acknowledged for that kind of good corporate responsibility. So, we thank you for the work that you're doing for veterans, speaking as one to another, but also your landlords should be commended for what they're doing. So, Jerry, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Citizen Commu... Oh, you have the light on, sorry. Flashing.
I'm blinking and flashing.
I'm not used to that yet.
I know you're not.
No, I just wanted to say, my understanding is that Fort Kennedy is working with other nonprofits in the area, kind of building a coalition so you'll have greater capacity together to help with homeless veterans.
We have a lot of things in the fire.
I bet you do. I know, we don't need to have, you don't need to come up, it's okay.
He's gonna speak, he signed up to speak.
Oh, good.
Under Citizen Communication.
Oh, well. All right, well, we're on to Citizen Communication.
And here we go.
Les Poole and Gary McAdams. And thank you both for coming tonight.
Good evening, Les Poole, Gladstone. I mentioned to Mary last week that with budget being what it is, I know you folks are trying to really watch the dollars, but we all appreciate, you know, donuts, coffee, some things at the meetings, and if you can make that happen, I'll keep coming. Uh-oh, maybe if you make that happen...
Careful there.
If you guys like anchovies, I'll bring pizza. Rather ironic timing that the gentleman is here. I've never met him, but you get a good feeling from someone like this. And the reason I'm here is coincidentally to remind all the citizens and at the same time, thank the commissioners for endorsing SB 694. And that will grant a property tax exemption to partially disabled vets. There already is one, but it's so far behind the times that this gesture would go a long way. So, it's still alive. I would encourage folks to, it's real easy, you just look up the Oregon Legislature, you can find out who your rep is if you don't know who they are. You email or contact the committees, you can call them. Keep your eyes open for chances to testify on these bills that are honoring our vets. And this letter that the county submitted on the 25th of February, I did deliver to Senator Taylor, and I know that Commissioner Humberston, I think I've got your name down.
You did. Thank you.
Has been really involved in this. So, I know there's a lot of controversy out there and there's a lot of commotion and there's a lot of hard times, but this is the kind of thing that I think we all agree on and I think we can all financially justify. So, again, it's SB or Senate Bill 694. Thank you.
I just would like to recognize Mac Woods for actually bringing that to our attention. And believe me, he told us many times, so we committed to that.
And Jose Hernandez, a disabled vet who testified. I promised him I would be in Salem and...
I'd like to have you at my next meeting.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Gary McAdams, president of All Military Veterans Outreach, as well as the president of Vietnam Veterans of America for the last nine years. I'm pleased to say that before me is probably the finest council that we've ever had in Clackamas County. Sonia, Mary, I look forward to your presence at my nonprofit. Come see, if you can leave there without having a burden for veterans, I'll be surprised. It's kind of an eye-opening situation in Johnson Creek Boulevard where we sit, one side of my desk is in Clackamas County and one is in Multnomah County. And who do we speak at more, right here? Because we know we're going to get things done here. We continue to thank you for your support. I'd like to thank Brenda Durbin and her fine staff for the count this year. We had our center open every day, providing the opportunity to have meals for every person that was accounted. It's teamwork like we've experienced since the first time when Martha and Paul came to our offices and had an open eye. This gentleman doesn't know, but I live in Gladstone. You know, these veterans are not asking for handout, folks. They could not care one about a handout. And as Ken and Jim this last week saw, they want a handout. They want the word dignity. Let's give it back. I served 33 years. I'm 100% disabled. I have two toes on my right foot, but you know what? I don't quit. Ken doesn't quit. Jim doesn't quit. Paul doesn't quit. I know Martha doesn't quit. We'll find out from you. Because we're gonna be here, I'm gonna be the new Mac Woods. And I'll give you up on Mac Woods. Mac Woods is lying on his deathbed tonight. If he makes it through Sunday, it'll be an absolute miracle.
Have you shared with him 694 yet?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Where we're at, who's pushing. All the lanes are pushing. You know, there's no, and I'm gonna finish with this, there's no I in the word team. I look before the leadership of this county. Really don't care what the state's doing, we'll get them, come alongside us, but we're here to make it happen. Thank you again for all of your support. Welcome, come to my house anytime.
Thank you.
Come to your house.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, Paul?
Yeah, Gary, thanks for your service and thanks for helping out your comrades and others. I was, myself and Martha Schrader were both very impressed when you roll out the red carpet for us, I really appreciate it. And we learned a lot.
Our house is our house. Thank you so much.
Also, if you haven't been there recently, Tina has...
Oh, it's unbelievable.
Really gathered lots of clothing, food, they have showers.
They're opening a movie house.
Yeah, a movie house.
Gonna have ping pong table soon, somebody's...
Ping pong table, the center was just donated.
Uh-oh. I just gotta figure out somebody who's got a pickup truck that's actually open because mine's got a shell on it so we can put... I'll do that, okay.
Tina was actually originally hired by our own Human Services who went out into the field to help supplement the homeless count because we had a real low count one year and we kept saying, there's more veterans, there's more homeless veterans than there is, so...
Want to see something that Martha?
Well, I think you have to come up to the microphone. But she would go out in the middle of nowhere and go out in the camps.
She knows where all of them are at, as well as my oldest son. He provides donuts and coffee three days a week to Above Estacada in the forest. But anyway, we have now, we're gonna open up a movie house with the old-fashioned movies, fresh popcorn, fresh candy. It'll keep them dry during the wet period, it'll keep them warm in the cold period, okay? And I'm gonna make this pretense, if you'll come alongside us, if you'll come alongside us, and all the churches that are out there will help as well, I'll guarantee you, we won't put 85 people in homes, we'll put 100, okay? Jim, see me, call me, anytime you need us.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Jim, I have to say one more thing, I'm gonna get in trouble, because I have my good friend Tina Olson, who's a veteran, and if I don't mention all the work she's done, she will call me tonight and tell me what to say, Tina, hi. But truly, she's a real advocate down there, they can't keep her quiet. And she's got the ODVA's director's cell phone number on speed dial and she does regularly go down there and testify. And she was actually, I don't know if people know this either, you know, that Tina Olson was responsible to get the Veterans Women's Coordinator down there. She pushed for that and she also lobbied to get the additional dollars in the lottery funds as well. So, she is also a force to be recognized. So, we have the two Tinas on our side, which mean that we will not fail.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name's Gene Zahary. I'm a resident of Milwaukee, Oregon. And I appreciate the support you give to individuals like Mr. McAdams and the organization that he represents. That need is so big and we need to be responsible. And with him in mind and hearing about his facility, I, early in the winter, I was talking to a staff person at Father's Heart and I was trying to get an idea about the demand, how they were meeting it. She said, "Well, you know, what we really need is space. People are bringing stuff in by the carloads." I'm talking about the public. Sounds like you might have the space to act as a repository and then a way to sort and collect as needed. That's just one cooperative thing that could be done. When we look at the point in time count, it's a window into a problem. And in that point of time count, I did not see any number of people who were camping in their cars. They are bunched into a larger group. On March 14th, you heard from several Clackamas County Department representatives talking about several options. One was transitional housing and car camping. Now, if you don't know how many people are utilizing that way of staying warm, how can you choose an option and make that available to nonprofits, churches, service centers with a $520 application fee, if I'm not mistaken? That makes no sense to me. What makes more sense to me is that you find the funding elsewhere, so you have a transient lodging tax. Why not take 3% of that, put it into housing for that larger group of homeless people? The homeless vet is the smallest increase in the number of homeless people in the point in time count. But wouldn't that be cool that you have people coming up to visit here, paying a tax that helps homeless residents of Clackamas County? Another thing you could do is let the commercial interests that are... Another thing you could do is let the commercial interests that are gung ho and behind the Clackamas County Fair get more involved, provide more funding. If I'm not mistaken, $400,000 goes to the Clackamas County Fair? Does anybody dispute that?
It's actually a little more than that, but there's no dispute.
Okay. Well, those are just some of the ideas I've had and I appreciate your patience in listening to my thoughts. Thank you.
And thank you. Okay. So with that, we're going to move on to a public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider a board order for a boundary change proposal. It's number CL-17-002 involving the final approval of annexation to the Tri-City Service District. And we have Mr. Chris Story here to present this item to you.
Good evening Commissioners. This is the final hearing on the FUN boundary change. This was brought to you in September of 2016 identifying the problem that several parcels, and I think several is an understatement, have annexed into the cities of Oregon City and Westland but were not subsequently annexed into the Tri-City Service District. The Tri-City Service District is the sewer provider for those parcels. So this is a boundary change to correct what was an oversight in the process when the city should have notified us and allowed us to annex those into the district. We've done a comprehensive review of the boundaries of the district and the boundaries of the cities and identified 1,686 parcels in those two cities that should be in the Tri-City Service District but are not. So we worked with the Department of Revenue and the cities to clarify that and asked the Board to propose annexation of all of them in one omnibus process in February of 2017. You did that. We held a hearing on March 30th and received no public testimony in objection to that. And you adopted an order that preliminarily approved the annexation. Under the annexation statute, the people who are being annexed in have the opportunity to submit remonstrances or objections to the annexation at this public hearing or during the time period between the two public hearings. We have received zero remonstrances, which means that at this point, there is no need for you to consider ordering an election on the question of whether or not the annexation should go forward, but are indeed authorized to enter a final order annexing this territory as of today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, all this is, I mean, there's no tax increase.
There is not.
It's just folks that have hooked up to the sewer but inadvertently were not annexed into the district, and that's the only change.
That's correct. The primary purpose that we are pursuing this is to ensure that the ordinances of the district apply to them. The Clean Water Act requires the holder of a Clean Water Act permit, which the Tri-City Service District is, to appropriately regulate discharges into the sewer system before it is discharged into the waters of the United States. So we are just trying to align ourselves with federal requirements and making sure that to the extent there ever may be a vote within Oregon City, that those folks are included in the conversation.
Great. Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak on this matter. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL-17-002, final approval of annexation to Tri-City Service District.
Second.
I moved and seconded to approve a board order for boundary change proposal CL-17-002, final approval of annexation to Tri-City Service District. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is the consent agenda.
Okay, today's, this evening's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with the Mental Health Association of Oregon for alcohol and drug peer support. Approval of Amendment Number 16 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as the local public health authority for Clackamas County. Under Finance, a resolution approving the submission of the Assessor's CAFSA grant application for fiscal year 2017-2018. And approval of a revision to the bylaws of the Clackamas County Audit Committee. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Community Corrections, approval to apply for a grant with the U.S. Department of Justice to study early intervention for opioids users. Under the Development Agency, approval of a contract with Harper Huff Peterson Reggellis to provide design and construction engineering services for the Boyer Drive Extension Project. Underwater Environment Services, a resolution approving the purchase of two heavy work trucks for Clackamas County Service District Number One. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Is any Commissioner who wished to pull an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Anyone else want to second that?
Second.
This moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up is the County Administrator Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I once again have the pleasure to offer kudos to our staff at the Transportation and Development Department. This time, it's our Building Codes Division. We received a very nice note from a woman named Mary, who they helped with her house. And Mary wrote, "I want you to know that your team is beyond compare. I have done many unusual projects in several states. My project in Clackamas County, I took personally because it is my permanent home. One can never underestimate courtesy and kindness." And so Mary went on to list several of the staff members that helped her with the planning, the plumbing, electrical, and the structural inspection issues. And she passed on special thanks most sincerely to permits technician Shirley Cass Crosby, who helped me every step along the way. And so I just wanted to thank Mary for sending us that note and also to thank Shirley for demonstrating great service to our citizens and customers here in Clackamas County. Then I also wanted to share with you some good news regarding our health centers. A couple of weeks ago, our Beaver Creek, Gladstone, Sandy, and Sunnyside clinics were each officially designated by the Oregon Health Authority as patient-centered primary care home tier-three recipients. This means that we need very high standards of care in our health centers. It means that we have benchmarks in place that will help and lead ultimately to increased funding from coordinated care organizations like Health Share of Oregon, and we'll keep you apprised of that as that develops. Then finally, as you know, April is National County Government Month, which is coordinated by the National Association of Counties. And this year's theme has been Brilliant Ideas at Work. And I just kind of wanted to give you some updated stats because I think you know that we are in the process of sponsoring monthly microchipping clinics for dogs. And these are free on a monthly basis. And the clinics are run through a partnership with Good Neighbor Vet. And they're done on the fourth Saturday of each month. Now, I think I had mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago that our January microchipping event was a real hit. We had some 28 dogs that were microchipped. Now, the prior year, it would be about five dogs a month. So this program has really taken off. And in February, we microchipped 35 dogs. And in March, that increased to 37 dogs. So I just wanted to say, keep it up to our dog services folks. And also thank Good Neighbor Vet for partnering with us on this brilliant program. So the next clinic is this Saturday, April the 22nd. And I got one other item because I got a letter just a little bit ago sent to me from Kelly Brown, who is the immediate past Chair of the Government Law Library's Special Interest Section of the American Association of Law Libraries. And she sent me a letter wanting to inform me that our county law librarian, Jennifer Doglish, has been awarded and recognized for a publication that she co-authored with two other gentlemen titled Managing Government Law Libraries Today: Challenges and Opportunities. This was published in the American Association of Law Libraries Spectum, November/December 2016 issue. And so Jennifer, who runs our law library, and, you know, we only get a chance to see her about once a year when she comes in to present her budget to the Budget Committee. But I would always highly recommend going down and visiting the law library down there, they do a remarkable job. But she was awarded the Publication Award for 2016-2017. Just read you what it was that Ms. Brown sent to me, that Ms. Doglish's article is "A Call to Arms for the Survival of America's Government Law Libraries in the Name of Democracy." That description is not hyperbole, nor is it criticism. The authors themselves state that law libraries change lives. And they are correct, argue that America's unique form of democracy, in which citizens have inherent rights, requires that people have access to government information to exercise those rights. It's a delightful paragraph. And so Ms. Brown then said that the GLLSIS is delighted to present the Professional Publication Award to Ms. Doglish for her article which links support for government law libraries with the survival of American democracy. Wanted to say.
Great, thank you.
Nice job, Jennifer.
I've had the opportunity to work with Jennifer because every once in a while, the legislature tries to take law library money away. And she's, AOC Public Safety Committee has worked with her to make sure that she keeps the money that she gets, which isn't much. And I haven't heard yet this year if there's anything, I'm sure she'll let us know. Anyway, with that, we'll move on to Ken Humberson. I did it wrong.
Pretty good. Close.
Couple of things. First, going back to the rental situation and homelessness, I'd just like to, once again, kind of put it on the record that the increase in rents of 28%, let alone some of the higher numbers that we have occasionally seen, have nothing to do with the increase in expenses and everything to do with an increase in greed. And a good part of that is because large corporations are purchasing large amounts of our rental properties and then obviously the issue then becomes shareholder value. I'm not sure what the solution to that problem is. But again, I'm going to put it on the record, I owned a couple of rentals for a number of years. And the entire time I've owned them, I've made about 12% per year in return on investment, which is a decent return on investment, and never raised the rents. So in my opinion, this is exploitive, this, what's going on, and that's significantly contributing to the housing problem. I don't know what the solution is unless it's rent control, that's certainly one solution. I know that people will fight it tooth and nail. But that said, if greed is going to run rampant and nobody's going to get it under control, that may be the kind of response that ultimately comes down the pike. The next thing is I met with the Housing, excuse me, the Home Builders Association today, just a get acquainted meeting, but I wanted to pass on to our Planning Department a compliment from the Home Builders Association, who have said that our Planning Department does quite well by them in terms of timeliness and effectiveness and helpfulness. And they were very, they were pleased with how that operation is going.
Did they mention the reserves?
They only mentioned that they wanted it resolved so there would be surety in the business community and they can move forward. And they were quite clear about that and pleased that we were moving forward to get it resolved so we can all move on. So that was a plus. And last but not least, once again, we have the dog. So if we can get the picture up, here we go. "This is Ray, with one ear up and one ear down, how can you resist such a cute little fellow? He's a 10-year-old dachshund-terrier mix. Please ask to visit with him in the meet and greet room where he is more sociable. He would rather meet you in person. He has lots of energy for an older guy and can be very playful. His slick fur is the easy care kind, just brush and go. Come and see him soon. For more information about Ray and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs." Thank you.
Paul?
Well, it's been a long week, it seems. I was very intently listening to Commissioner Humberson in regards to the rents. I'm reading a book currently. Jim and I learned about this book in Washington DC. It's called How to Kill a City. It doesn't sound as deadly as it sounds, but it is really about displacement and about homeless and all the implications. And oddly enough, you know, when I'm done reading the book, I'm more than happy. I'm actually considering buying a few copies so I can hand them out to many people and making sure our library, it's another thing I want to talk to is Gary Barth, is to make sure that our library keeps copies, because I'm going to be talking about this quite a bit. But it's, the irony here is unbeknownst to me and probably unbeknownst to a lot of people that are in elected positions and probably even people at administration that are unaware of it, that while we can look to those cases of maybe landlords taking advantage maybe and exploiting the opportunity, that a large factor into where those areas are of very, very high rents is the government's role. And how the government actually exacerbates that, and I don't say in a deliberate sense necessarily, but you need to read the book to understand. It's really what I've been talking about for two years that I learned, but this book does a better job of taking some case studies and examples and putting in great detail what I have been, again, learning myself. And when I talk about how government invests, where they invest, and what we do and what our policies are, this book will help you realize exactly what I'm talking about. Of course, I'm learning about some of the case studies, one of which was New Orleans before and after Katrina. One of our newest transit directors in the city of Wilsonville, Dwight Bashir. Very, very sharp gentleman, worked in New Orleans at the time of Katrina. And he, of course, has a story about what it was like trying to evacuate those folks during Katrina. And unfortunately, over 2,000 people lost their lives in Katrina due to that storm. But the story before and the story after, and relate, as it relates to gentrification and as it relates to government's role in that and displacement, is a larger story. And it's a very typical story. I'm in the section right now that's talking about Detroit. And of course, the Bay Area is mentioned quite a bit. And myself and Commissioner Schrader went to an all-day conference on homeless where the Bay Area was listed as a case study in which we, there's a particular professor from Berkeley who was there, and I've been citing many of her findings. And there is a way to actually improve or prevent, frankly, prevent us, government, indirectly exacerbating the problem. And I think there's a learned experience there. So my earlier comments, talking about rents and poverty, there's a relationship. And if we create a market in which people can actually profit consequently, not necessarily directly or deliberately, then that's really on us. And I think we have to realize that very thing. But Wednesday morning, we had a few extra, we had about 15 extra minutes, and I was able to ask Dwight to tell his story and his knowledge and awareness of gentrification and displacement. And he was able to speak to it very, very well, in a very real fashion. And I think that is what this book kind of brings to life. The other book, which is a good read, if you want to talk more about the plight of people that are, become evicted as a result of that, is the book Evicted. And we were able, me and myself and Martha actually went to a little, because the author was in town, and so we went to a little event where he was speaking. And we had a lot of government-related people, elected officials and state representatives and so forth, trying to exchange ideas and learn. And I'll tell you, the last two years, three years, I have learned a tremendous amount. Continue to read more than halfway through the book. I hope to have it done this weekend. I'm trying to knock out a chapter to two chapters a day. It's not an easy read, it's very difficult, but it really, it really, I feel a responsibility as an elected official to get the word out. I feel a responsibility that while I sensed all this was happening, I really didn't realize how much of a role we do play. And I just feel a very deep-rooted responsibility to get the word out and to try to help our staffs and everyone else and planners. I'm assuming that gentrification and this problem, which has been cited back in the 50s and 60s, is either. and sixties, is either within 101 of planning, or it's in 202 or 303, or maybe, maybe it's part of a master's thing. I don't, I don't know when, but I think we should all have an education on that and learn how and why and what takes place where gentrification actually drives class separation and gentrification and makes, unfortunately, is not helping the people that are in desperate need. So, that's my story. I'm sticking to it.
Mr. Schrader?
Well, thanks. I am, as you were mentioning, Evicted by Matthew Desmond. I went to, I went to the front of the book, because he has a quote from Langston Hughes from his little lyric of great importance. And the quote is, "I wish the rent was heaven-sent." So, there you go. So, that is the beginning of the book, which I thought that was kind of an interesting quote to have. And staying with the theme of housing, we did, I did attend our Housing Advisoring Board meeting this afternoon, where we really are starting to look at the continuum of housing we have in this county. So, the presentation from our Housing Authority guru, Chuck Robbins, included all the public housing, you know, the inventory that we have here in the county, we have in Oregon City, we have some in Milwaukee. Those two areas is where the most of the, what we would consider to say, public housing is. And what I asked them to do, because we not only have the public housing piece, but we also partner with organizations, nonprofits, like Northwest Housing Alternatives, Catholic, Catholic charities, there's one in downtown Portland, pardon me?
TPI.
TPI, yeah. Yeah. And eventually, what we do is work with them. And that housing isn't necessarily public housing. A lot of it is voucher, voucher-related affordable housing. And we're also trying to work with, so it's a combination. When you talk about housing, it's a combination of public housing that we actually run in our inventory, and we're working to actually get a larger inventory by utilizing the land that we have that isn't, isn't really being utilized to its best in capacity, to really get a four-to-one density return, so we can house more people in these particular areas. We want to decentralize the housing, in that we'd like to see more of our municipalities other than, you know, than Oregon City and Milwaukee maybe start to look at this. I know that there is some affordable housing work in Lake Oswego. And I am aware that the Clackamas County Coordinating Council, which is a coalition of our cities, as well as our county, is starting to look at this countywide. And we are working on, and Commissioner Savas has worked on this with me as well, we are looking at transitional, really transitional housing unit for veterans at this point. And we think we have a site, but it's not ready for prime time yet. So, as that continues to move forward, we'll, we'll keep everybody informed. Other than that, it was a pretty busy week. I spoke to the Kiwanis Club in Canby before the State of the County, so I got to give them our personal State of the County before we talked that night. I had an opportunity to do an introduction at our Clackamas Workforce Council, where they had a meeting, and the theme was reducing the skills gap in manufacturing. And so, we had a number of businesses attend and experts that are talking about the workforce training that we're doing to reduce the skills gap. I also had a meeting with Joanne Truesdale, because I was taking a look with her at the college's master plan for expansion. They are ready to, to actually start building a new manufacturing technical center for training on the campus. They actually passed a bond, and that's going to be huge. And the businesses are very, very excited about that, as they partner with the industry to make sure that we have folks trained. And other than that, I think this Saturday, I'm going to go to the Clackamas Community College's Environmental Learning Center Earth Day Celebration, because it's Earth Day on Saturday.
Is there any other announcements?
Arts?
Arts?
I don't have it today. I don't know what happened.
Put it up.
It's on the screen.
Oh, it's on the screen. Okay, great. All right. Arts and Culture Activities in the County, Lake Area Art Show and Sale, annual show and seal of a group of forty painters. That's going to be this Friday and Saturday at Lakewood Center for the Arts. And it's going to be from ten a.m. to five p.m., ten to eight on, excuse me, on Friday, and then, and Saturday, and Sunday, it's going to be ten to five. And there's an artist reception Friday and Saturday, five to eight, at the Lakewood Center for the Arts. Weekend events at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, Oregon Ghost Towns, A to Z, with author Steve Arnt. Local author Steve Arnt will present the newest book in this series, Oregon Ghost Towns A Through Z. This multimedia presentation will highlight the numerous ghost towns that can be accessed in Oregon, many right here in the Willamette Valley. Ooh, that sounds like fun. Saturday, April twenty-second, one p.m. And finally, sounds along the Oregon Trail with Heartstrings Musical Duo. Nancy and Rob Downey play a variety of instruments that were common during the Oregon Trail migration period, including hammered and mountain dulcimer, fiddle, acoustic bass, banjo, and the Native American flute. Sunday, April twenty-third, one p.m. And for more information, you can go to clackamasartsalliance.org. So, thanks, Mary. Okay.
Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I continue my busy education as your newest county commissioner, visiting with Health Housing and Human Services Social Services Division today, and learning very specifically a lot about what we do in Clackamas County. Also, went out and went to Development Transportation and got quite an education, actually seeing where we repair the trucks, where they are, how we get out there, how we do it. And when you're there and you see all that we do, we see where we make signs, we see where the signs are, we see how they practice the striping for repairing the stripes on the roads. It's, it's a lot. We do a lot. And I know that our citizens really appreciate all the work that we do. Also, been getting out there, meeting with elected, other electeds around the county, have visited with Mayor Studa Baker in Lake Oswego, had a very good discussion on housing, which is on the forefront of everyone's mind. Also, made it out to meet our new mayor from Estacada, Mayor Drinkwine. And just first met him, and he said there were eight hundred voters, and seven hundred fifty of them voted for me. So, he has a lot of support in Estacada, very excited about the industrial development park that is happening out in Estacada. I had the chance to drive through there and seeing all the opportunity. It's real good for Estacada, and he's very proud of that. Also, connecting with the cities of West Lynn, cities of Happy Valley, to talk about lots of issues. But I just have to say that as our theme tonight has been talking about housing, this is, these are the conversations that are happening everywhere, because we really do, across our community, care about folks that are struggling in lots of ways. In closing, I just want to do a shout-out for our continued efforts in advocating with our Oregon Legislature for funding for human services and all the needs that are passed through, for us to deliver. The co-chairs came out with a detailed list this week of the cuts that they are proposing if the legislature doesn't figure out how to find a balance between making the appropriate cuts that make people happy, finding a way to find stable funding, and coming up with a plan to deal with the budget shortfall that is happening in Salem. Just to let folks know, some of the cuts that would really affect us is reduced funding for mental health, reducing programs on public health, reducing tobacco cessation programs. We've talked about Oregon Project Independence, which is a very good program. It's not a whole lot of money, but it really helps keep older people in their homes. That is proposed to be eliminated. In developmental disabilities, there are some huge new cuts that would really limit services for children. There, currently, parental income for in-home services is waived, and they're looking at counting that, so that services for children would be restricted. There are other cuts. A real issue for us specifically is case management services. We provide case management to lots of vulnerable folks, and they are looking to reduce the amount that they reimburse us, which will increase caseload and make the burden much more difficult for the folks that are on the front lines working. So, I just want to continue our advocacy efforts with our legislative delegation, because our most vulnerable citizens are so important to all of us.
Thank you. And first off, I'd like to congratulate Ken and Grace. Yesterday, they celebrated their forty-eighth wedding anniversary. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jim.
I also, today, I went to the Community Corrections Commission. It's kind of been dissolved, but they call us back in, because there's some potential big cuts to community corrections. And they wanted some idea from us, what they should work on to make sure that the legislature understands just how important it is. Also, if you have an opportunity to go into the circle of honor between the two buildings, you'll notice pinwells. This month is National Child Abuse Month, right?
Awareness Month.
Awareness Month?
Happy Children's Month.
Okay. All right. And there's over four hundred pinwells, and those are the, the number of children that the Children's Center helped last year. And that's, that's just a part of them. You know, we, we need to work really hard to break that cycle, because I, along with community corrections, I just want to read the stats. More than a third of females, state prison, prison and jail inmates said they had been abused as children, as did fourteen percent of the inmates, male inmates. Report noted that in the general population, estimates of, estimates of physical or sexual abuse as children range from twelve to seventeen percent for females, and five to eight percent for males. And that's a terrible statistic. It is a big problem that we need to, as a community, work to resolve. Also, Mac Woods would probably think strange that I would like to honor him and send him my thoughts and prayers. He and I always didn't get along, but I tell you, when I heard, I had a tear in my eye. You know, he, he was here a lot. He, he, we heard him. And thanks to his efforts, it's possible that those who survive, veterans who have been disabled, will, Clackamas County will be voting to reduce their property taxes. And that's thanks to Mac and Jose Hernandez. So, with that, I'd like to end tonight's meeting and wish, tell Mac that our thoughts and prayers are with him. And thank you for coming tonight. With that, we're adjourned.